Good morning, and welcome to the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, December 12th. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire? Chair Renode?
Present.
Chair Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you would, please stand for our Pledge Allegiance, followed by our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. This is a prayer adapted from one by John Saxon. Holy One, known by many names beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings on the commissioners who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but, "What do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen?" May they, as well as the rest of us, remember that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, our sibling, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of these among us. Our children, the elderly, the poor, and those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. God, may you grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know what to do and to do it with truth and love. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. May it be so. Amen.
Thank you. Yeah, it takes us to correspondence organizational business. An update from Heather Morgan on Executive Director of the Project 17. Heather?
Thank you for having me today. I presented this presentation to the City Commission, and they suggested that you all might want to have the same information. So, Project 17 was involved with the city's environmental study related to getting the sewer line into the industrial park. We paid for $5,000 of the environmental study that's, and then helped them. I wrote the USDA Rural Development Community Facility loan for them as well. So, I watched the video that you all had, the joint session with the city a few weeks ago with Mark, or KCADC, and some of the things that you hear today will really dovetail with what KCADC said. And I'll tell you that that presentation that you received is something that other commissioners need to see too, in other communities, because it is right on track in terms of what's best practice in economic development, how you're going to lure businesses into that park, and really the idea of the regionalism and workforce and how everything in the community has to play in to be able to land prospects like that. So, if you have questions as I go along, stop me. I don't know if we can turn down the lights a little bit, it'd be easier to see. All of this data comes from publicly available sources and then some data that K-State uses specifically. So, there's 25,000 people in Franklin County, and there's 11,000 jobs. The median household income is $51,000, which is still about $4,000 below the national average median household income. But what you can see is the jobs have increased 1.2% from 2013 to 2018 in Franklin County. But this fell short of the national growth rate. The national growth rate for jobs is 7.4%. I'll tell you that most of the state of Kansas is lagging behind the national growth rate. I gave the same presentation Monday in western Kansas, and they were 17% behind. So, 1.2% may not seem like very much, but you are kind of right on track. The one other thing I want to add is Franklin County, for some reason, and Richard at the city and I have had conversations about it, I don't quite understand it, it is the only county that is contracting right now, along with two other rural counties. It's a slight contraction. I don't understand why or how, but the statistics tell us, and the data says that there is some contraction happening here locally. The labor participation rate did increase 2%. So, people who are able to work, there are more people who are actually working here. So, as you can see, that the job trend has been down a little bit, but the projection is high in the future and growing. So, that's the kind of trend line that you want to see. So, you can see what the cost of living is in Franklin County compared to the state of Kansas, compared to Douglas County, compared to the Marck region. You're very, very competitive in cost of living. So, as you think about responding to proposals that the Department of Commerce will put out, clearly, cost of living is one of the things that you can tell. You're importing about $1.52 billion, and you're exporting about a billion dollars. So, you are bringing in more things here than you are exporting out. I put this, the Project 17 region as a comparison, so it's actually a little more expensive to live in the Project 17 region than it is to live here locally. So, 17 counties that are in the Project 17 area, the population is projected to decline 3%, or has declined 3%, and is projected to continue to decline. So, what does the labor force look like here in Franklin County? There are about 588 unemployed folks, that varies from day to day, but you can see there's about 14,000 people who are in the labor force. There was 11,000 jobs. So, that means you're probably exporting your talent to another community. So, when you respond to a RFP, and we have to deal with workforce issues, there's about 3,000 people that if there's a job here, maybe they aren't going to drive to another county. So, you have available workforce, and it's all about how you sort of spin and talk about the availability of workforce here. So, that's a very big positive when the labor market is so tight. So, how do you compare to the US? There are less young people here. The first little box is millennials. There are less young people here than generally in the US. There are more people retiring soon. Again, it goes to that labor pipeline. How are the people who are the pillars of the business community? How are they going to be filled? What's the next generation of that talent look like? Really important, not for just job growth, but for filling the existing positions. Not too diverse. And if you look at the crime statistics, very safe. You're lower than the national average for just both violent crime and property crime. Again, that's one of the things that you can tell. You're the bottom statistic there, so you're significantly less violent crime in the region, and you're also less property crime. So, you're a very safe place to be. So, you have a good cost of living and a good, very safe environment. This chart shows inbound and high outbound commuters. So, on the west side of the county, you have a lot of outbound commuters. I'm going to guess that those people are going up to Johnson County, maybe Lawrence, maybe Topeka. And you can see on the south side of the county, less people are commuting out to So, the educational attainment compared to the region, about, across the region, about 13% have a bachelor's degree as their highest level of educational attainment. Here in Franklin County, it's about 12%. So, it's actually 1% lower than the region. You've got about 1% more people here with an associate's degree, and you've got about 1% less in the region in terms of some college. 37% of people in Franklin County, a high school diploma is their highest level of educational That's about 3% higher than in the region. So, you know that you have people who are probably working in technical professions with those sources of statistics. So, what are the largest industries in Franklin County? You see governments up there. There are a lot of schools accounted into governments, that's why it's so high. The little gray lines are where the national average is. So, skip over government, but the next one is transportation and warehousing. So, clearly, you have significantly more transportation and warehousing jobs here than the national average. That's your strength. So, as you think about what you can use your new industrial part for, you're in a prime location for distribution. You're in the center of the US, you have access to major highways. That's where your strength is, and you're always going to be more successful playing to your strengths. You have a little bit more retail trade than the national average. You have less healthcare and social assistance, and less manufacturing. So, you can see the only other one, there's two other sectors that you are above the national average in. One is ag and forestry, so the ag sector here, and the other one is educational services. So, OU certainly, Neotia County Community College, those are a little bit higher than the national average. So, we talked about industries, now we're talking about occupations. So, what types of jobs are those people who are working in those industries doing? So, you can see the one that's very high is production. So, people who are making things, ATC truck covers, things like that. Then you have education is also higher. People are working in the educational sector. Transportation and material moving is a little higher than the national average, as well as management, healthcare professions is right out there, the construction and extraction, installation, maintenance, and repair, and healthcare support. So, these are some of the occupations that your citizens are working in. So, this data is all tied, it's a data set called MZ. It's tied to CareerBuilder. And one of the interesting things on CareerBuilder is, if you've ever gone on there, some of the jobs are just reposted and reposted. So, for every one job that's posted on CareerBuilder, it's actually posted three times. That's the three-to-one posting intensity. In the last year, there were 25,000 unique postings on CareerBuilder. The median posting is up for 25 days. By far, the number one posted job, 11,000 jobs for heavy truck and tractor trailer drivers. We know that CDL drivers are in tremendous demand. The pay is good generally for those jobs, but that is the job that is the most difficult to fill in this county. The next is RNs. Interestingly, the next is insurance. Then you have back to sort of the CDL issue, light truck or delivery service drivers, first-line supervisors, then teachers, food prep, so on. And you can see that post, these job postings are really focused on some of those technical professions, professions that don't necessarily need a bachelor's degree to fill the positions, especially those logistics jobs. So, the total occupations, again, I just mentioned, the transportation material moving is by far where the most jobs are here. Sales is next, installation and repair, then food service, then healthcare. You hear a lot about the healthcare shortage, but in comparison to the need for workers in the transportation sector, it's really small. So, what are the high-demand skills that are sought by the Project 17 companies? So, what this data set does is it crawls all of the job postings and says, "What are the skills that those jobs are actually looking for?" So, the skill is nursing, obviously, purchasing, insurance, acute care, merchandising. Those are the hard skills. But what's really interesting is the soft skills. So, these positions are looking for people who have sales experience, people who can do customer service. I always say, "Be nice to my customers and your coworkers, let's half the battle." Management, innovation, communications, operations, leadership. So, as we think about building that workforce pipeline, over 10% of the jobs are looking for these soft skills more than the hard skills. The qualifications sought, so again, we're talking about credentials or degrees. CDL truck drivers, number one. The next one's critical care nurse, RN, a bunch of healthcare certificates. You go pretty far down this list before you find one that actually takes a bachelor's degree. You're very well positioned with the Neotia County Community College and the nursing programs that they have here, and the ability to produce those technical certificates. Again, 5,000, 5,800 jobs looking for that CDL driver. So, figuring that piece of the puzzle out is going to be really critical, especially as you think about trying to land new jobs that might also need CDLs. So, where are people making their money? The 2018 earnings per worker in Franklin County, management, obviously, is the most lucrative job to have. The next is wholesale trade. Then you have oil and gas extraction, manufacturing, and then transportation and warehousing. So, we know that you have the most transportation and warehousing jobs. The average pay for those jobs is a little over $50,000. That's a pretty good wage for one person to try to help support families. And who's making the absolute most per hour? Healthcare, legal, architecture engineering, life science, management, and then business, computer. Transportation and material moving is down here, about probably $18 an hour. So, what's going to grow here in Franklin County? The projections for job growth are again, in that transportation and material moving sector, in personal care services, as the population ages, more in-home care, things like that, sales, then healthcare, and then installation, and then ag. We all hope that ag's not going to stay where it is for much longer. Going forward, so, this LQ means location quotient. It's a fancy word for concentration. Again, nationally, you would expect in any community to be at the number one. Y'all are at number five. So, you have five times as much transportation and warehousing as a normal community would expect. You have four times as much agriculture, about 1.5 times as much educational services. So, as you think about what might complement those things, those are where your strengths are. In the region, utilities is by far the most. There are people here who are working at Wolf Creek. There are probably people here who are working at Pulisine Power Plant. Those two things skew utilities in the region. Then you've got oil and gas, mining and quarrying, then manufacturing, and then ag and forestry. You know, Iola, Garnett, they're having manufacturing growth, and they're poaching some of your workforce to go down there to fill some of those jobs. The growing industries in Franklin County, again, retail trade, healthcare, transportation, warehousing, other services, and then construction. In the region, manufacturing is where it's at. Chanute's landed two very large manufacturing projects, one for pontoon boats, one for aircraft, Horizon Aerospace, very recently. Manufacturing is growing in the region. Then the next is ag. So, over the past five years, what sectors are contracting and which are growing? Educational services decreased by 344 jobs. Some of that had to do with funding, obviously. Oil and gas, not a surprise. Let's see, IT contracting a little bit, manufacturing contracting slightly. A lot of the IT jobs in the region are being outsourced to another county because of the lack of available workforce here for those sectors. So, one of the things that we think about when you think about economic development is clustering, and you always want to build off your strengths. So, advanced manufacturing, I heard from the city, one of the city commissioners said, "Well, I want to diversify from transportation, I want to get into manufacturing." Well, that sounds nice and good. The good news is that you have some here. The darker colors mean where the concentration is higher in terms of advanced manufacturing. So, Coffeyville actually has the second-most manufacturing going on anywhere in the state of Kansas, the second amount of outbound trucks. There's a tremendous amount of stuff happening in Montgomery County, and then you've got Pittsburgh. You all have some advanced manufacturing, but not as much as maybe you could have. So, perhaps figuring out up and down the supply chain, is there a manufacturing opportunity? So, in the region, there's 6,400 jobs in advanced manufacturing, which is 2.5% times higher than the national average. Those jobs are paying about 60K. So, that's good. They have, the number of business locations has decreased by four over the last five years. Some of that is related to companies acquiring each other. The black line is the regional trend, and the blue line, the bottom line, is the national trend. So, actually, in the Project 17 region, the advanced manufacturing cluster is growing at a higher rate than the national average, which, considering what the state of Kansas is doing overall, this is really, really good news. The interesting thing that you think about from an economic development perspective is, rarely does something just drop out of the sky. Sometimes it does, but rarely does it just fall out. The biggest and best opportunity for economic growth is something that's related to the company that you have now. So, in the advanced manufacturing cluster, only 16% of the supply chain is in the region. So, thinking about how do you get more supply chain in the region, more supply chain locally, is a huge opportunity. So, of the iron and steel mills, only 0.1% satisfied in the region. Plastics, 0.1%. Machine shops, less than 7% is happening in the region. So, all of that stuff is coming from outside into the region. You've got some pipe, fabricated pipe and pipe fitting going on, but all of the supply chain for advanced manufacturing, there is opportunities to move that here closer to where it's actually, the end product is being used for growth. The other large cluster in this region is food processing. So, in Iola, you've got Brussels Stovers. In Pittsburgh, you've got Triple T Meats, and they're about to have a huge expansion. This idea of taking our ag products and adding value to them prior to them going to market is the way our ag sector is going to make more money, which is going to help our community. So, there is some food processing going on here, but certainly, the opportunity is for more. So, there's about 2,000 value-added food jobs in the region, about two times the national average. Those jobs are pay a little less, 45,000, but there's 80 locations in the region doing this sort of work. So, again, the black line is Project 17 region, the blue line is the nation. The region is outpacing national growth trends in food manufacturing and processing. So, how do we capture this idea that we have the commodities locally, we're producing the raw materials? How do we get companies who need to add value to that materials here, and especially with you all having such great highway access and produce your food here that you can then export out of the region? So, only 24% of the food manufacturing needs are currently being served in the region. You can see, so the animals, 47% is being, is from in the region. In terms of crop production, only 53% of the crops going into those value-added products are happening in the region, and 80% of the general freight and trucking. So, there's 20% growth, again, but to use a local transportation firm to help move those things to market. So, again, 75% of the supply chain of food manufacturing is coming from outside the region. And with that, I'm going to stand for questions.
Okay, anything for Heather?
Boy, it's amazing to me how you come up with all these numbers.
I know, right? I'm glad someone else just hands them to me.
Anything else?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Heather. Derek, anything else on organizational business?
No, sir.
Okay, public comment?
We have two public comments. Terry Wolford is the first one.
Okay, Terry?
Terry Wolford, 3962 Reno Road. I live out, my farm's out near the Ottawa co-op expansion thing. In August of 2017, we asked about having some kind of a speed limit sign. It's an unposted road that goes by my house. The trucks are screaming by, and I just wondered if there's been anything on that or what the deal was. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, next?
Gene Hurt.
Well, Gene's coming up. Mr. Wolford, I might recommend that maybe you meet with Mr. Lee, who is our new Public Works Director, and you may want to discuss that with him. Okay, Mr. Hurt?
Gene Hurt, 219 West Fourth Street, Linden, Kansas. Last week on Friday, I received a phone call from a gentleman down at Garnett. And the reason he called me was because Cleon Rickel had told him that if there was anything that was pending on a certain subject, that he should call me so I could investigate it. So, when he did call me and told me what it was, I said, "Yeah, I am concerned about it." And I wanted to thank him. He told me the information that he wanted forward on to me, and so, what I did, I started the investigation on it at that point. What it's about is this hotel out here. Nobody has been talking about it for some time. No action, no more on the hotel. There's a reason. He told me the Wichita Eagle Beacon newspaper. So, I got in touch with the Wichita Eagle Beacon newspaper. What they told me was that the hotel here in Ottawa, Kansas, is not going to get built because there is a major lawsuit right now on this individual that, from outside of the state, trying to build this thing here. That ain't the only issue. There's more. So, the thing of it is, is, you know, I know somebody in this room knows more about this than any of the rest. And so, I just want to make emphasis here is, here you go. Sounds like to me it's going to be hung up for some period of time, and it may not, like they're saying, it probably won't get built because of this lawsuit. So, unfortunately, that's bad news because I know how much you guys want this meeting room, and so does the city. Well, I told you before, this hotel is not all upped up, as they say it is, as well as the individual that's trying to build it. So, here you go, another defeat. And so, now you're going to have to put up with another issue that, you know, whether or not you're going to get it turned around or not. And before I stop for a few minutes, I want to make a few comments from the lady that was in here, bringing all this information up here. You know, there's a few things she leaves out, and I think it's important to be reflective of it. I worked at a warehouse manufacturing plant all my life, for 48 years, okay? And you've got to have a skill. You have to have associate's degrees, people that will come and work in a building because of the high rate of pay they can produce at a facility. And you don't have, you don't have a whole lot of people around here with associate's degrees, not for warehouse manufacturing. And so, as I said before again, you're looking at a floodplain out here at Proximity Park, and I know nobody wants to hear about it, but it's out there, and that's going to be deterioration. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Consider and approve the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for December the 5th. Consider and approve the tax change orders in the amount of a negative $50,397.26. And before you vote on that, Janet, you can help me here a little bit, but a lot of this is not actually revenue loss, it's because of the tax sale and the changes of the taxes there. So, it's not like all of a sudden we've lost $50,000 in revenue.
Most of that, over a negative $51,000 of the tax change orders are due to the specials that the city of Ottawa had on the tax rules for the, on the properties that were within the tax sale. So, it has to happen where they come off the tax rule so that those properties are cleared of those, of those debts on there, so that they get back on to tax-paying individuals. So, those are to remove those specials, and we've never paid them out to the city because they've never, the taxes were unpaid. So, basically, the city just doesn't get their money for that, and I'm sure that's something that they've compensated for in their budget. As I gave Randy the totals, approximately $1,000 positive is actually what the actual impact to the tax rule is of the tax change orders.
Right, yeah. Thank you very much, Janet. So, with, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make the motion.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Renode?
Yes. Okay, first item of my business, approve the purchase of a 2019 Ford F-350. Okay, first item of business, approve the purchase of a 2019 Ford F-350 from Shawnee Mission Ford, PEG?
Good morning.
Good morning.
About a month ago, I'm sure you remember, I was here and we, during the study session, and we discussed replacing the truck that was stolen from the recycle center. Did a little further looking in the used line and just came up with absolutely nothing still. I did reach out to Shawnee Mission Ford. They have the government fleet pricing, and they came up with a figure for me of $37,720 for a 2019 Ford F-350. That is a chap, cab and chassis, excuse me. We did receive back from the insurance company, if you'll recall, $10,400 that has gone into our special caps account that could be, you know, used towards this truck. One thing that I, I did lean towards Shawnee Mission, I don't honestly know of any other places close by that do the government fleet pricing.
Right.
We buy a lot of our trucks from Shawnee Mission, but they also work with Napa Hide, where we would have to or need to purchase a bed for this truck. They deliver that truck directly to Napa Hide, so we don't have any involvement in it until we actually go to pick that truck up. So it saves us some man-hours and, and some labor there, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions then about this purchase?
So we're mainly looking at 27, 720, using that $10,000 from insurance.
Yes.
Did the other truck go to the insurance company? Was it totaled out?
It was totaled out, and then the insurance company sold it, yes.
I would tell you, Commissioner Howard, that our special caps fund, and I don't have the balance in front of me, I don't know if either of you do, but it's, it, special caps looks great, so this, this won't, and this is not going to compromise that in any way. And then with regard to Napa Hide, and, and we looked around too, because we try to keep things local if possible, but there's just so much efficiency that we save, and there is a cost savings from letting Shawnee get the truck up there, have the bed put on. I mean, it, it just makes far more sense, a better use taxpayer dollars, frankly. And so, and that's our next item, obviously, but, and the price for the, the chassis cannot be beat. I mean, it's as good as we can get, so.
Yeah, I remember the study session seemed like everybody was in consensus, and we were just waiting to see what the insurance and everything did.
And also, this truck's going to be used for some snow, is that true also?
Yes, we've ordered it, we haven't ordered it, I'm sorry. We would order it with, the quote includes the pricing for the, the snowplow hookup and...
Right.
Yes, and we already, we have the plow, yes.
And I know that truck's used in some of those smaller areas, subdivisions called the socks or whatever it might be, is that they can get to, instead of our big trucks, so.
Right, we use it not only there, but at the transfer station to clear snow and, and spread salt and stuff out there as well.
Okay, any other questions for?
Is there any incentive to do a 2018 versus 2019?
You know, there wasn't really, I hadn't even tried to price both. He's having trouble finding 2018. 2019 seemed to be the better way to go.
Anybody want to make the motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of 2019 Ford F-350 from Shawnee Mission Ford in the amount of $37,720 for a solid waste.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair of a note.
Yes. Okay, PEG then, the purchase for the flatbed from Napa Hide in the amount of $5,506. You've already explained that, that'll be taken care of straight from that purchase, so.
Yes, sir.
If there's not any other questions, I'd look for a motion to purchase the bed for the truck.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a flatbed from Napa Hide in the amount of $5,506 installed.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair of a note.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda then, be considered the neighborhood revitalization applications. Janet?
So before you guys, you have the list of properties that are being proposed to be a part of the neighborhood revitalization program, and listed are what the proposed rebates are. So these, these properties would have to go through the whole process, they would have to, have to complete the repairs, and then they would be entered into the program once the repairs are completed and verified through appraisals and through the planning department at the City of Ottawa. So this would just be for you guys to consider these into the program.
Okay. There's two commercial properties and two resident-owned properties, one resident, new, new resident, and then there's three rentals. Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the eight properties presented in the neighborhood revitalization program as each property meets the requirements.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard? Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair of a note.
Yes. And our next item then is consider neighborhood revitalization updated plan for commission approval.
So again, regarding the neighborhood revitalization program, the City of Ottawa has held some meetings to discuss potential changes to the neighborhood revitalization program. Most of that is surrounded by additional area that they would like to include in the program, which you have a map in your, in your packet of the area of the program, just some additional neighborhoods that they, they had seen some interest in development in that were kind of lagging behind in, in repairs and growth in those neighborhoods. So that's what most of the, most of the updates are. There were a few minor updates to some other things, like we did clarify what the past due dates were so that it was clear to people when their taxes had to be paid and what was considered late to be able to still remain in the program. So just a few other minor updates, just mainly just adding a little bit of area to the program.
It primarily gives some expansion of that to areas that could benefit greatly from it. There are properties on the north side specifically that are underdeveloped, that could be developed underneath this project and could expand or building within the City of Ottawa itself.
It is my understanding that they already have some properties in those areas that are, are interested in the rebate and have submitted paperwork, so they would like to get this taken care of so they can move forward with those projects for those individuals.
I think it's also important, again, always reenact that this is, this is a rebated program, if they meet the requirements in, that it doesn't take away from the current tax, it's being levied against that property, but will increase eventually and benefit the county, the city as entities to receive, and the school district, so.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the neighborhood revitalization program and adopt the attached resolution and revise inter-local agreement.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair of a note.
Yes. Okay, that takes us to staff reports. Derek?
Yeah. Last night, the city manager and I went to dinner with a site selector who does site selection on a national scale. And so what that means, his job is effectively when companies want to expand or find new job sites, they hire individuals like this to, to find properties for them. This guy has done this all over the country, from Miami to Seattle, Albuquerque to Albany, New York. I mean, he, he's, he's been everywhere. And it was a fascinating conversation to talk to him. And he, he's an expert when it comes to the costs associated of relocating and what these companies look at, what their expenses are, and, and distribution companies, and this stands to reason, but 65% of their costs, according to this gentleman, are transportation costs. And because of that, location is absolutely critical. And so these companies are, are looking at the, you know, their customer base and what they serve, and, and he, he loved the site. He loved the location. And, and I will, I will tell you, I mean, I'm not an economic development guy, but I take solace in the fact that every piece of information that we've gotten, I mean, we've had other site selectors out there, they love the site, they love the location. You know, I'm getting the impression that it's just going to take some time, it's going to take the right fit, it's going to take the right company who has the right customer base, but being located right off of 35, right south of 70, you're out, you're out of the major metropolitan area, which a lot of companies, I learned apparently, look for because there's less congestion, there aren't toll roads down here, easy on, easy off to 35. And so, I don't know, I came away from the conversation feeling, feeling good. And, and so we'll keep, you know, we'll keep working, and, and Randy and I are going to lunch with this gentleman today, and we'll pick his brain some more, but so far, the feedback that we've gotten has been, been universally positive, so. And that's all I have.
Mr. Thompson, I think, from the Sheriff's Department? Okay. Allison? Dave?
Well, Commissioners, related to Proximity Park, the revised traffic control plan should be going in to KDOT this week on the intersection of Kingman and 59. As soon as KDOT signs off on that, we'll be ready to advertise and start the letting process for that project. So things are moving right along on that. And on Kingman, they are preparing to pour concrete on the north lane of the, of Kingman, east of the bridge. They've got that prepped, it's ready to go. We stopped by this morning and, and didn't see any activity, but I'm going to run by there this afternoon. I expect to see some concrete trucks, I'm hoping to see some with this nice weather. It'd be a, a great time to get some concrete down. So they are, they are pushing right along, so hopefully things continue to do so. And I believe the city should be first of the year preparing the sewer line that's going to be running through that park as well, so things are progressing.
All right, thank you. Janet?
I just want to make you guys aware that next week, we will have a budget amendment that'll be before you. It's already been published in the paper, just a few minor changes to, to our budget to make sure that a few of our funds didn't go over this year. The main one being tourism with the additional expenditures that were unplanned out of there, like the Legacy Square project and the Old Depot Museum project. So just that, and hospital sales tax, appears that it could possibly be over, so as a precautionary, since we were already doing the budget amendment for tourism, we went ahead and put that on there too, which shows that our sales tax is coming in really nicely this year. So hopefully ours also is going to be a little bit over what we projected, although it's general fund revenues, so it doesn't, the reason we have to do it for the hospitals because it's a, it's an outgoing expenditure to us, and so we have to make sure we stay within our budget authority for expenditures, that's why we do it for them. So yeah, that has already been published in the paper, and it will be on your agenda for next week, and we'll also be considering the transfers, the year-end transfers next week also.
Right, okay.
And I, I think to be clear about that, because we've had a lot of discussion about the transient guest tax, what Janet is talking about is just a budget amendment. It doesn't, it's not a reflection of what our TGT balance is, because we've actually had a fantastic year TGT-wise, and so our balance is great, and we're just amending the budget because of those, but the, because of the unplanned expenses, which our good collections helped us, you know, make some of those contributions, and so.
Well, as Janet said, it's the end of the year, and when you make your budget 18 months before that, you're sitting there thinking, okay, what are our income going to be, our revenues, or where they're going to fall at? So obviously, when you get down to the end of it, you've got to make your adjustments to be legal, stay within that, so.
Right, and those are, these are all based on expenditures, they're not based on revenues that have changed, so while we, you'll see in the budget amendment, when you look at it next week, well, the transient guest tax does show the increased income that came into, into that fund, so you will see that, but all, all four of the funds that were amended were amended strictly on expenditures.
Okay, great. Okay, that takes us then to Commissioner comments. Rick?
I attended Richmond City Council last night. They talked, they renewed a liquor license for the filling station that's out on the highway. They're having some issues with, dogs ran loose, as most of the smaller towns do, and they talked about some of their options and possibly changing their ordinance to try to deal with that. And they talked about taking some bids on one of their water towers that needs some work done on it, and that was pretty much it.
Okay, Rick?
I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting yesterday morning, and we went over the 2019 budget, approved it, and also goals for 2019 for the chamber, and approved those, some of those, including a new website, which I was encouraged that the chamber is working with Lee Stadler, who's also working with our tourism. Hopefully, a lot of that can mesh together, and I think that's a good fit. I think it'll work out well for both entities to do that. So they're looking at that, they're also looking at different revenue streams to increase the revenue into the chamber as well, and, and try to keep it a little more solvent and, and try to figure out a way to balance things out a little bit better, and making sure that each one of the organizations within the chamber, each one of those committees, doesn't come out negative in their committee, but tries to bring forward a little bit of a positive balance towards the budget itself instead of drawing down on, on reserves that are within there. So I think that was very positive, and then just set some goals for the director for the next year as well, so.
Roy?
I've been anywhere.
Okay, I attended the Lane City Council meeting Monday night. They talked a little bit about some grant money that they were getting and working on their sidewalks. Also discussed their personnel for water quality down there and training for that person. Other than that, it was pretty standard business for them. They, they did have some discussions, of course, like Rick said, the small towns trying to maintain quality of living for themselves and some regulations and not having a lot of resources. So certainly, I think as a county, we, we want to consider the residents in the county and the small communities, what we can do to assist them, in whatever way that might be. Okay, if nothing else, then I would look for a motion for adjournment.
Make the motion, will you adjourn?
All in favor? We are adjourned.